Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting for May 10, 2018, and may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Myers?
Here.
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 Here. Please be advised Commissioners Brodsky and Bowman are excused. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the broad.
Thank you. There are no Board President announcements this evening, and likewise, there are no Board presentations this evening. So at this time, we'll move right into public comment on agenda items. Public comment on agenda items only. Seeing that there are none, we'll move right into our consent agenda, and I'll call on Vice President Stephen Klein.
Thank you, President Luker. Our consent agenda, public comment on agenda items, is taken at the beginning of the regularly scheduled public meetings prior to any votes being cast. When recognized by a presiding officer, the commenter will have, oh, sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing. Items of business and matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by a Board of Commissioner member, that item is to be identified by the board member and will be identified and removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately at the appropriate place on the agenda. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through K as listed on the agenda, and I so move.
Second? Excuse me.
I would like to amend the agenda by putting consent item root back on the agenda.
And which item would that?
Okay, which item would that be?
Commissioner Myers?
Letter D, PW-3-03-05-1018.
Then with that, President Luker, I'd like to amend my motion to include, to make amend the motion that the consent agenda is being moved to include items number A through C and E through K, and I so move.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Manager Mayor Freddie, seeing that Commissioner Myers would like PW-3 put back on the agenda, would it be appropriate at this time to call on Commissioner Tom Hacker for Public Works? Chair?
You can handle it right now?
Right.
Okay, are you okay with that, Commissioner?
Certainly, presumably.
At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Hacker, Director of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you. So the Public Works Committee has one item this evening. It's PW-03-05-1018, and this is a motion to appoint McMahon Associates as the primary traffic engineer and traffic planning and design as the conflict traffic engineer and Panoni Associates as reviewing traffic engineer for traffic safety matters and VCM engineers for stormwater management and general consulting engineers and Boucher and James consulting engineers as general consulting engineer and conflict stormwater management engineer. All firm rates are to be no greater than the rates provided in Exhibit 1, approved consulting engineer firm rates, and I so move.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. The reason that I asked to have this put back on the agenda, we had discussed this in committee, and my concern is that leaving, and I'm only addressing the traffic end of it, which is Panoni, we, because under a grant that we get the advice from a Panoni engineer, I think it's a conflict and confusing that for, if there's a disagreement with that engineer's decision, that we go to another engineer in Panoni and pay that engineer. We have, we do have one there, and I'm sorry, there was another, and I'm not, traffic, I think it should be somebody other than Panoni that we go to for the second opinion if it's needed.
It's not reasonable.
And so it's just a matter of policy. It's not, I have no problem with the decision of the individual engineering companies. I just think it's a policy decision that we need to.
Manager Mayor Freddie?
There are two reasons for this. The reason for Panoni is because right now LTAP, the contract, is with Panoni. The engineers are both with Panoni. So one advantage of using the Panoni engineer to review it is that you're not duplicating work. So let's say the LTAP reviews it, reviews the work of Officer Freed and comes to a conclusion, and the Ward Commissioner or the full board chooses to say, I'd like to have somebody else review it. You could have the same engineer, you're not duplicating work, you're not spending another hour or two taking up and recreating another design. You can look at what the engineer's already done and render an opinion, so it'll actually save money. You could also say with this setup with the various alternate traffic engineers, you can say we'd like to have, you know, someone from one of the other alternate traffic engineers, whether it's TPD or McMahon. So the reason it's Panoni is because they're Panoni. That's one reason. The other thing is too, you don't know if, you don't know if next year or a year after that some other engineering firm may get the LTAP contract, so you would have continuity. So you really have three options. It doesn't have to be, and we haven't, frankly, that's going to be on the June agenda, the chief and I haven't sat down and finalized that policy. I know we've talked about it a number of times, but there's really, the policy decision on who you use and when will come then, not necessarily now. This is just establishing the rates, and they're being set up as a traffic engineer. So you can condition it that it's not only Panoni who does the review, but that's the reason it was recommended that way, so that we wouldn't have to spend more money, that one engineer in the same firm can look at that engineer's work, and we wouldn't have to duplicate the analysis and spend a couple hours, which could be a couple hundred dollars.
And I agree, that's logical, but I think it could cause a problem if, if the first engineer makes a determination that the Commissioner doesn't like, and certainly if we're ever told no, we don't like that, so we're going to go to the conflict engineer. And I realize what you're saying about using an engineer in the same company, but I think that causes a problem, making an engineer in the same company make another determination than the first engineer.
And I guess what I'm saying is, the place to do that would be in the policy that's going to be before you in June?
And I'm, and I'm fine with that. I did not know that, so as I said, I have no problem with the selections here. I think that's, they're all very good.
The other thing we can do is if it would give the board comfort, rather than saying the reviewing traffic engineer, you can say conflict traffic engineer, and then we would have three very clear conflict traffic engineers. It accomplishes the same thing.
Mr. Hacker, your call, I guess?
So, I think to summarize, because one important thing that could happen, so if the work as part of the LTAP grant were to move to another firm next year, having Panoni on the list preserves our ability to use them moving forward, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And if I'm hearing you correctly, listing it this way does not restrict an individual Commissioner or the board from saying, if we were to get back something that we disagreed with and we wanted to seek another opinion, we have multiple options. We're not compelled to use another person at Panoni. We could say, we actually want somebody from the outside to take a look at this.
You could say of a different company. When we, when we get into that discussion at the next meeting, the first thing that's going to have, have to be addressed is if you want to have the ability to seek another opinion, and then in that case, we're going to have to have the discussion about money, because this is what we talked about once before, we really didn't appropriate dollars for all of this trafficking, there's not enough money in the traffic safety budget.
Understood, right.
So in that policy that you set forward, you'll have a second bite at the apple, so to speak, of saying how we're going to use which traffic engineers or the list of these pre-approved at the rates that you're approving.
Right. So I think there would be value in having them listed and then defining the policy in such a way to minimize the concern that you've raised, Commissioner Myers. That's just my perspective.
And I'm perfectly fine with that. I'm glad that we have discussed this further because I didn't know, and I'm going to assume that most, everyone didn't know that we were discussing policy in June, so that's really what this is about, it's a policy decision.
Yeah, it's a good question.
So this would not require a revote?
No, we have to vote now.
Well, it depends. Do we need to? If you'd have, if, if, the objection is to the language of reviewing traffic engineer, you would just alter the motion to change Panoni Associates as reviewing and make them a conflict? It's really whatever the pleasure is. Tell me what you're trying to accomplish. So it would either be, read the motion exactly what it is, read the motion with changing it out from reviewing traffic engineer to conflict traffic engineer in the case of Panoni's?
Well, I mean, I guess.
Because this is really about approving the rates and who, more so than what they do.
But is the policy going to clear that up anyhow, and then there's no reason to change the motion, change the verbiage in the motion?
In my opinion, it depends what you decide, but yes, it would make it more clear in the policy.
I don't understand that. It depends on what we decide. I guess, I'm asking the question, if we left the motion the way it reads right now, would that be, would that be satisf, will the questions that Commissioner Myers is bringing up be satisfied within the policies that you're going to bring forth with the chief?
Based on the concerns that she raised, I would suggest changing Ant Panoni Associates as reviewing traffic engineer to Panoni Associates as a conflict traffic engineer.
And that will better align with the policy, the general policy that you're going to bring forth?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're removing to alter the motion?
Right. Then along the lines of Commissioner Myers' comments and concerns, I think we should change it then.
So we need to make a motion to amend the original motion. Okay. And while I'd be delighted to read it again in its entirety, I think we can summarize the change as, we're going to name Panoni Associates as conflict traffic engineer for traffic safety matters, correct?
Second, and you move on. Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other comments from Commissioners or staff? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hager.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner John Spiegelman, Director of the Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, the Public Affairs Committee has three items of business. The first is PA-03-05-1018. It's a motion to adopt ordinance number 2154, adopting a certain intermunicipal agreement for the purchase of pool chemicals and supplies among numerous municipalities and authorizing the township manager to execute said intermunicipal agreement, and I so move.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Comments from Commissioners? From staff? There are none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Second item is PA-04-05-1018. It's a motion to advertise ordinance number 2156, amending Chapter 126, Real Estate Registry Vacant Properties, at Section 126-4, registration statement of fees, local agent, subsection D, waiver of registration fee, and I so move.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And finally, we have PA-05-05-1018. This is a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, PHRC, and the Abington Township Human Relations Commission, THRC, and I so move.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. I ask for any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
That concludes the business of the Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. At this time, call on Vice President Stephen Klein, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker, and I'd like to call on Township Treasurer Jay Blumenthal for tonight's treasurer's report.
Commissioner Klein.
Hit your mic.
I've got all the monies received from the various departments and deposited in the Republic Bank for the month of April 2018. Year-to-date, we had a total of $14,971,718 deposited in April, compared to last year of $20,053,502. There's this decrease of $5,081,784 for the month, and a year-to-date decrease of $1,864,780. As to real estate taxes transferred to finance, we received $8,201,973, year-to-date $22,291,80, with the balance, the collective $4,799,845. This is the decrease of $6,214,995 compared to April of '17, but if you remember, March of '18, we had an increase of $4,981,018 compared to the prior year-to-date. So it's a matter of timing, pretty much. I don't see an issue with it. That's my report.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. We have one item tonight, which is FC-02-041718, motion to approve the March expenditures as previously circulated to the Board in the amount of $1,995,696.15 in salaries and wages in the amount of $2,897,932.21, and authorizing the proper officials to assign vouchers in payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of June 2018, and I so move.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Ross, Ross?
Yes.
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 Thompson?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Zappone?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. That concludes the Finance Committee's agenda. Thank you, Vice President Klein. That concludes our formal agenda, and if there's no further formal business, I'll open the meeting up for public comment.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. And I did miss the early public comment because nobody accommodated to say that there was no presentation, and as long as I've been here, there has been a presentation of awards before Commissioners' meeting. So coming a minute or two late just means you missed somebody, the very beginning of them getting an award. So I would appreciate a little extra time if you would accommodate that. I did ask last time if you would put, if there's no presentation, none, okay? But I wasn't accommodated in that manner. So I will try and get through these as quickly as I can. Number one, the speaking rules are improperly being used. We have a resolution. It's Resolution 16023. It was passed July 14, 2016, and it was passed specifically because every time, every time we had a meeting, you changed the rules, or you changed the rules for various people. And there were enough complaints that we got you to put a resolution together for what the rules actually were. Each Commissioner was handling everything differently, and we put that together. The rules now are being changed and broken at will in ways, every single time there's a change, it's a change that's against the interests of the residents of this township, and that itself is a disgrace. So first of all, the currently published rules, don't ask, say that you have to have questions after all the commenters have spoken. So that, of course, would be ridiculous. By the time you get around to answering the question, nobody remember what the question was or what the premise of it was. Residents are able to debate or discuss. Only the presiding officer can choose if they would like not to have debate or discuss to say so, and that's what the resolution that was passed says. You're also able to speak on non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, and we have asked you, please, to make accommodations. Last time, you had three people here who wanted to speak, they didn't know where to speak, and if you had accommodated a simple place at the beginning of the meeting where you said, are there any people who would like to speak at the beginning of the meeting? That would have solved that. One was in such distress when she left here, she went right to Abington Hospital, where she still was on Wednesday when I visited her, okay? The conditions at the, at the brand-new $17 million Crestmont property are unbelievable, unbelievable. So the stress of having to go through all of this and then coming and sitting through a whole long meeting and not speaking, we're asking you, please, to recognize those things and to change those things. Residents, you say in your rules are, are to give their name, but they don't have to give their address. Not so. In, in the rules that we have, residents here, everybody's name and address. It's not sent privately over to somebody for the, for the minutes or whatever. No one is to sit down in our minute, in our resolution because the presiding officer told them to. In fact, the presiding officer is not supposed to interrupt the speaker. The presiding officer is not supposed to be involved in the conversations. They're supposed to be presiding and allowing the conversation to, to happen. The, the rules of order are supposed to prevent these kinds of interferences, and I also, although this did get in the resolution, I would like to reiterate again that it is against our interest to have residents to, to sit down, you know, when they have a question to ask. I don't hear well, and being up here helps me see Mr. Manfredi's face rather than sitting down and seeing the back of his head, okay? So I would very much like to have you change that. So nobody would mind you changing the rules if you changed them for the benefit of the people that you're elected to serve, and that's not happening. I asked about the cameras. We have new cameras. We, we had wonderful views on the old cameras. I don't know if you had complaints, but the new cameras, we're getting tiny little views. We look like Cheltenham, which I've been working with the people in Cheltenham to get theirs changed because they can't see what somebody says. When you back up and you pan out to a whole room, nobody can see the person's lips. So people like me, who are hearing impaired, lose that ability that the camera affords them, okay? And it, and it serves nobody to take a speaker and film them from behind. I, I don't know why that's happening. I would, I did ask Mr. Manfredi to please get back to me and direct me to where I could find the budget line, the discussion, the meeting, something where the cameras were approved and discussed and what the need for them was. I didn't get that courtesy, but I would like to have that courtesy. I'm not sure, I'm sure they were expensive, but we had a very expensive set of cameras here that seemed to be working, and I didn't hear any discussion about them not working. The, the firewalls issue is finally resolved. There was literally effectively one sentence that was added to the zoning. And what this township manager, yourself, Mr. Chair, my Commissioner, and everybody involved put me through to get one sentence because you didn't want me to have it. You took right-to-know time, you took secretarial time, you took clerical time to, to apply the right-to-know. I was going to have to have all of them copied, it was 100 pages. This is.
You're saving, you're up to five minutes now.
Okay.
Can you wrap up your comments now?
But I hope you recognize that that is complete mismanagement and a disservice, and I, I mean, there's, there's almost no words for it. Chief Livinggood, when he was chief, promised me that the police pension thing would be changed. It's not. I would like you to give that your attention, Commissioner Luker, okay? I would like you also to give your attention to a, what appears to be about a 1,200-square-foot room that cost $1.6 million to build, and I, I would very much like to have that investigated. I think that is an unbelievable abuse of taxpayer money, along with the condition of the HUD properties for 17.7 million.
Okay, Ms. Lehman, you're up to seven minutes. I'd like you to close your comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you for the extra time. I appreciate that, and please write none when there's no presentation.
And I thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public? And if there are none, I'll take closing comments from the Commissioners, starting with Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm so glad that the Speaker brought up the Police Pension Association letter that probably every resident received. When I read it, I thought it was very clear what they were asking for, but just to be sure, I spoke to a former chief, John Livinggood, just tonight about the letter, and he said that the language had been changed, that he had had conversations last year with the Speaker, and that the language has been changed, and I do see where it has been changed. This is the only solicitation that the Police Private Pension Association puts out, and this money goes towards aging police officers whose pensions are not what they were when they retired, and especially the widows of police officers. And the card that goes inside, the emergency card that goes inside, the Pension Association is actually doing us a favor by mailing this. We, the township, do not have to pay to mail this, and when it comes back with or without a donation, and the letter very clearly states that you do not need to make a donation to return the, the emergency information card, and that gets turned over to the Police Department. I, I am happy to share this letter with anyone if they didn't get it. It couldn't be clearer. They are 501(c)(3), and their officers are listed, and I'm looking at maybe all but two or three people on there are not police officers or former police officers. So by all means, I think this is done in the best way that it can be and couldn't be more clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothman?
Thank you, President Luker. Just briefly, tonight, I want to acknowledge a family within Ward 3. There's a park right next to the McKinley Fire Station called the Ethel Jordan Park. Ethel Jordan's family was selected for an award that they will receive on May 23rd. There's an event from 5:30 to 7:30. You can read about it at the Tucany, Tacony Frankfurt Watershed Partnership's website. They have done so much great work throughout all of Abington, but particularly in Ward 3 over the past few years, at Albertor Park and also at Ethel Jordan Park, and I'm really proud of the family for coming out and helping through the various events we've had over the past few years. So I wanted to give some additional recognition to them and hope that people will go to the website and take a look and maybe attend on May 23rd. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Commissioner Di Pasito?
Thank you, President Luker. I just wanted to wish all the moms, grandmoms, stepmoms, me-moms, nonas, jajis, oh, no, I'm sorry, bopchis, and umas, very, very Happy Mother's Day. Bubby, thank you. Anybody else? Did I miss anybody? All right. And, and finally, when driving through Abington Township, please drive like your kids live here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. President. No comment this evening.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to express my gratitude to the Abington Police Department. The last week and a half in the North Hills, Oarsley area has been kind of a tenuous one, and if it wasn't for the information that was constantly flowing from your department, I think we would have had a lot more concerns in our area. So thank you for your attention to our community, and thank you for dealing with the situation.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Vice President Stephen Klein?
No comment.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Zappone?
No comment at this time.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes, thank you. I think I already said before, thank you to everyone for participating in the Greater Glenside Patriarch Association run. We, it was more successful than ever, so I appreciate everybody's support in that. And also, the 24-hour relay challenge is coming, not this Saturday, but next. I'm not sure what that date, 19th?
19th.
19th, yes, so don't forget that. They need volunteers, so try and get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gillespie. Commissioner Vehe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to announce spring cleanup at Howell Field, scheduled for scheduled for Saturday, May 19, starting at 9:00 a.m. Howell Field is on Highland Avenue, across from the SBS Technologies factory. It's a good gathering of neighbors to come out and clean up our neighborhood park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to remind everybody, hopefully you got something about this in the mail, but this Saturday, May 12, is the National Postal Carriers Union Stamp-Out Hunger Drive. So, you can put a bag of durable, non-perishable food, so things in cans, things that can get jostled around, not get too banged up. Put that out, and your letter carrier will take that, and donations will go to help our local food cupboards, including the Great Interfaith Food Cupboard of Abington. And happy Mother's Day to all of the categories of moms described by Commissioner Di Placido. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Commissioner Hecker.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to make two related comments. The first is that we've been made aware, and if you haven't received it in the mail yet, you will be soon, that PICO will be hosting an open house on May 23 from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Arcadia University in the great hall of the University Commons Building located at 450 Southeaston Road, Glenside, PA. And parking will be available in Lot 11. And the purpose of this open house is to discuss resident and customer concerns about storm response. So, with that said, and what I'm about to say does not necessarily reflect the opinion of the Public Works Committee, but as the Director of the Public Works Committee, I would like to go on record saying how wholly dissatisfied I am with this response from PICO. I think this will not achieve the dialogue that we were seeking to have. It covers a wide area, and 90 minutes to cover multiple townships does not leave enough time for proper dialogue with residents who have real concerns. So, while I'm glad they're doing this, it's not sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. Commissioner Lori Schreiber.
Thank you. We have, May and June is a busy time in the Roslyn Ward 14 area. So, we have our Memorial Day Parade, which is right on Memorial Day. It starts at 11:00 a.m. on Woodland at what used to be St. John and is now Salem Baptist Church, heading down Woodland to Easton Road to Bradfield, ending in Hillside Cemetery with a very nice ceremony there. And so, everybody's invited to that on Memorial Day. And I'm not sure when our next meeting falls, so I'm just going to announce two other things as well. On June 2, Saturday, June 2, is Roslyn Community Day at Roslyn Park. And Saturday, June 9, the following week, is the Roslyn Pet Fair on Easton Road. So, those events are coming up. I think they may be before the next meeting, so I wanted to get them in there. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. I have no comments at this time, so if there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some more.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending, and have a good evening.
You know, it's always concerns.